And so it looks like we have other committee members as well.
Oh, good.
So, um, I'll just make sure I see Councilman Stokes, the Vice Chair, um, MP Mary Pat Clark, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, Councilman Henry, Council Danielle McCray. Um, and we have Matt Stegman from the, um, Mayor's Office, and Nina Thomas, um, from the Mayor's Office. And we have, um, the Sims from, um, the Council. So it looks like we are good to go. I think we have everybody. So, good afternoon. This is Labor Committee, and we're hearing Bill nineteen dash zero four five two. Uh, it's employee-owned business reporting for the purpose of requiring the Director of Finance to provide annual reports to the mayor and the city council regarding certain Baltimore City employee-owned businesses, uh, defining certain terms and specifying the contents of the required reports. The resolution was introduced on October seventh, two thousand twenty, uh, by Councilmember Bill Henry. Um, and before we hear comments from the sponsor, I just want to let you guys know that we are going to have a work session, um, for the thirteenth of August for this bill we are hearing. Um, and now I'll let you go ahead, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will be keeping, uh, my remarks and the associated rhetoric brief. Uh, the council has already, uh, passed a resolution, uh, acknowledging the role of employee-owned businesses in the community of Baltimore, um, acknowledging that employee-owned businesses are particularly beneficial to the community. And, um, my hope with this particular ordinance is to begin to get a better grasp of how the city already supports employee-owned businesses. Um, and so, uh, just, I, I don't think I can put it any more, uh, simply than that. Is the whole point of this bill is for us to have a better idea of what we already do. And so, um, the, the reporting structures laid out in the, in the bill, um, the reporting requirements are all around trying to gather centralized and be able to share information on the city's current activities. And, uh, we'll, we'll talk more as we get into the details with the reports from Finance on the amendments, many of whom, many of which I've already talked to them and, um, and agree with. Uh, but there are, there is more work that needs to be done in terms of, uh, making certain that this bill actually captures all of the city agencies that, uh, could be, uh, working with employee-owned businesses. And so I want to thank the Chair for agreeing to do a work session next month. By the time that work session comes, I, I hope to be able to present the committee with a fuller, more complete package of amendments to make certain that this bill does what it's intended for. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Uh, I guess we can then just go right, uh, into the Law Department?
Madam Chair, I don't see anybody on the screen.
Right, I just, I saw that. And so the next, uh, BDC, is anybody in here from BDC?
Uh, um, Ma- Madam Chair, uh, this is Matt Stegman. Um, BDC, uh, I, I don't believe that they have anybody on the line. They did reach out to, um, my office before this hearing, uh, to say that, uh, that they thought they might have a conflict. Um, they, uh, they stand by their agency report, which is, uh, supportive of the intention and the concept of the bill. Uh, they just, uh, note that, you know, that the way that they, uh, currently do tracking and reporting, uh, they may require additional resources, and I think that's probably something we can work out with the, uh, bill sponsor, uh, since he's looking ahead to introduce additional amendments. That is BDC's report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A quick question for Mr. Stegman. Um, uh, so, Matt, if, one of the things that we discussed in, uh, in going through, oh, my God, he turned his camera on. One of the things that we discussed with the Finance Department, um, was that for some of the reporting, uh, that this bill is looking for, they are probably not the best agency to coordinate, uh, coordinate that. Um, while it seemed to us that the better agency to do so would be the BDC, we have also been informed by the Law Department that because of their quasi-governmental status, we can't compel them to do anything in legislation. And so we are looking to, uh, perhaps use the Mayor's Office of Small Business, uh, as the entity that would coordinate things. I'm raising, um, that issue because I wasn't sure, I only know Paul Taylor in that. I don't know if there's anyone working with him in that office who might be on the call. But I just wanted to give the Mayor's Office a heads up that, um, it seems like they would be the best entity to officially coordinate this effort for code purposes, even if maybe they end up subcontracting some of the actual work out to the BDC. Um, because of the status of the BDC, we can't make them the formal repository in code. So this was just sort of a heads up for that.
Okay. Good. Thank you, uh, Councilman, and, uh, I appreciate the heads up. And, uh, we can certainly bring the appropriate agencies together and have further conversations about that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm not sure. I don't see anybody, but is anybody on from MBO? No? Um, anybody on from General Services? Oh, if General Services wants to go.
Hi, yes, this is Eric Schuler, um, and Director Niaga Nash could not attend today. So I, um, am Deputy Director, and, um, we are happy to submit our review of the Council Bill nineteen dash zero four five two. Um, and as mentioned earlier, um, we, we also support this process, um, and any efforts made, um, within the process of competing for city contracts, any inherent difficulties or obstacles for employee-owned businesses. And we will certainly collaborate with other agencies identified in this bill, uh, to implement the necessary information collection mechanisms. Um, we are not currently doing those, um, in either of our types of procurement practices, um, capital construction, um, and/or general procurement practices, but we're happy to work through those processes.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Um, do we have anyone, any questions for Eric or anything? I don't see any hands or anything.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I'm, the, the, it, this question isn't just for Eric as much as, um, Eric, this is a great opportunity for me to lay this out for all of the agencies that were looking to participate in this. My expectation is that the, the, the biggest part of the work component for this is just going to be adding the definition of what an employee-owned business is to materials that are the part of any type of application for entities that are doing work with the city or vending for the city. Um, just adding that definition to the forms that we're sending out and having a box to check on the forms so that people can let us know that they are an employee-owned business. Um, it, this, this doesn't change, um, how the relationship works between the business and the city. We're just trying to do a better, have a better accounting for them. A lot of what we know about employee-owned businesses right now is anecdotal. Um, and, um, the, the hope and expectation is that local government can be, uh, a, a, a first, uh, a first step in getting a better count of how many of these businesses there are and how much business they're already doing the city government. So Eric, thank you. Uh, I thank, I thank General Services for their, uh, willingness to participate. And, um, I just wanted to get that out for, for all the agencies, Madam Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will support in any way we can, Councilman Henry, and, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone on from, uh, Department of Transportation? Nope. Okay. Uh, I think I saw, uh, Elena DePietro get on. Oh, DOT is here?
No, so, uh, again, um, Liam reached out to me ahead of the hearing. Unfortunately, he did have a conflict, but DOT stands by the report. They have, uh, no objections to the bill, and again, um, appreciate the, uh, the intention behind it. So, uh, they stand by their report.
Perfect. And so we'll just go to Finance, I mean, uh, the Law Department?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietro from the Law Department. The Law Department, um, is fine with the bill. We can approve a formal legal sufficiency. Um, the law system sort of understood that, you know, we don't really have the power to compel anybody to do this. The, 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 um, businesses out there, I guess, has got to be voluntary. But that's okay. You can still do, you can still legislate.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with Mr. Pietro that, um, the, the Finance Department has already responded with a, a package of amendments that I think we're going to discuss today when we get to Finance. Um, and we have discussed that, and we know that there are more to come. This is just, uh, again, as with Mr. Stegman, a heads up to the Law Department that, uh, we will try to put together the full package of amendments, um, in time to share that with the Law Department in advance of the work session on August thirteenth, so that law can review the amendments as well for formative.
Thank you, Councilman. We did receive a few amendments in advance, and so we're prepared to discuss them if you want to later in the hearing.
All right, let's go, uh, to the last agents. Go ahead, Councilman Stokes.
I just have a question. I want to make sure I understand what this says. Is this bill saying that city-owned, city employees who do business with the city or city employees that have owned their own business? Uh, uh, I'm trying to understand what exactly what this means.
Uh, certainly, Councilman. Uh, it's, it's, it technically isn't just about businesses in which people who are employees of the city have a business. It could be, though. I mean, if, if there is a business in which all the employees or some number of the employees, um, also work for the city, um, and they have a side business in which they, as the employees, own the business, then that would be covered as, as well. But the main thrust of this bill is about, um, just private businesses in which there, there is no single or, you know, you know, owner or a set of partners who own a business with multiple employees, but in fact, the business itself is owned by the people doing the work. Um, and, uh, the, the, I think the most, the well-known local example is Red Emma's, the, uh, coffee shop, uh, cafe, bookstore, in which, uh, the people who actually work and staff the business all collectively own it, um, and have partnership shares. And so, uh, there are other version, there are other businesses following that model in Baltimore. And the point of this bill is just to get a sense of how many of them are already doing some type of business, uh, with the city. And once we know, once we know that, then the city will be informed as to, you know, what tactics maybe should we be taking to, um, increase the number of employee-owned businesses, uh, given that we have, uh, academic information on how, uh, how, how much they benefit, uh, the, the community and the local economy where they're located. So, uh, thank you, Councilman, for the question.
Thank you, sir.
If, if, uh, Finance wants to jump right on in?
Well, I see that Steve Kraus is unmuted, but...
And I see Keisha Brown.
Yeah, it's like, I see other, I see other people from Finance who maybe aren't speaking because Steve was unmuted.
Hi, this is Keisha Brown, um, acting city purchasing agent. And Steve was going to lead the discussion, and I'm not quite sure, quite sure of his having some technicalities. Well, I will proceed with, yes, we've had, um, previous meetings with, um, Council, um, Councilman Bill Henry, and we did have some amendments that we were presenting in terms of what would be, um, beneficial to the city and the capacity within Finance and the abilities for, um, the Bureau of Procurement to, uh, track contracts and be able to identify them as, um, employee-owned businesses. But unfortunately, we do have different systems and whereby those systems are not tracked through the city purchasing, uh, department at this time. However, there is some discussion about, uh, potential opportunities with the new ERP system, Workday. Um, Director Raymond, uh, specifies some, um, uh, financial maybe impact that he will be sharing with, uh, Councilman Henry at a later date. Uh, but for the most part, the amendment sums up, uh, having, as, uh, Councilman, uh, Henry stated, uh, potentially the, uh, agency of MOED, um, coordinating these efforts so we could, uh, best implement the bill if once evaluated. Does anyone have any questions of me?
Just, just a quick clarification. I think we had settled on the Mayor's Office of Small Business, not the Mayor's Office of Employment Development.
I did also, which reflects my notes, and thank you, but I thought you said MOED, so I was going to go with you. I thought there was a change I didn't know about.
Councilwoman?
Uh, yes, I, I probably behind in the amendments that I'm, was reading. And it's not crucial because we're not voting today, but I, I read through Finance's, um, amendments. And I missed the part where the small business, um, division or whatever it is would be coordinating. What I saw was Finance was unloading, and I'm not being critical, uh, and getting, putting itself in an equal status with the other construction agencies, like with General Services, with Department of Public Works. Um, so, so that Finance was not left with, for everybody coordinating. But I didn't see that there was a substitute agency that was going to... Somebody has to give the report.
Yeah. Councilwoman, I can address that very easily. Uh, one of Finance's amendments was the striking of the entire Section fourteen dash four reporting requirements, city assistance to employee-owned businesses. Um, in, in, in the conversation that we had the other day with, uh, Director Raymond, uh, what, what we agreed on was that instead of adopting that amendment, um, what we would, what we would do is, uh, my office would work with the Mayor's Office of Small Business Development, um, to rewrite that section, um, in a similar way to the way Finance had, um, encouraged the rewriting of Section fourteen two to make it clear that multiple agencies need to participate in this. And, um, and in, in, in that new rewritten version of Section fourteen four, a different entity, um, most likely the Mayor's Office of Small Business, would be the one who would be the coordinator for that requirement. Or, or I guess technically the coordinator for holding information together. But we haven't drafted...
Okay, I, it's...
We haven't redrafted, um, that section. That's one of the amendments that needs to be produced before the work session on the thirteenth of August.
Okay, uh, so in other words, they struck, Finance struck that entire section, fourteen four.
But we're, instead of striking that section, we're going to rewrite it.
Write it with, with small business taking on that, that whole report?
Right.
And, but, and then they also, because I have to, I'm not going to be able to stay for the whole program today.
So far, you're here for the whole thing.
Oh, okay. So, so I'm already here for the whole thing. What's holding it up before Obama talks, right? Um, it's almost his turn. Um, so basically, sounds like you're working it out. It's a lot of information. Um, but I, I, if it, if it helps the employee-owned businesses get more of a presence within procurement and the other agencies, then it's worth all that paperwork that it's going to require. Thank you.
Yep.
And Madam Chair, when I duck out, would you please excuse me for that?
Okay.
I'm not doing it yet. I, I just want to hear Obama. I got to do it.
It's no problem. Um, Steve, are you able to speak up now and add anything? Because we can, we can hear you, it sounds like.
Oh, great. Thanks. I'm, yeah, I, uh, I, I'm phoning in because I, I don't have a microphone. So, um, I, I appreciate everybody's comments. We met with Councilman Henry, I think. And, um, our only concern what was that we were giving a lot of reporting requirements for which we had no, um, access to that, direct access to that data. We're very willing to provide, you know, procurement piece of this pie, but there's a much bigger part that's, that's contracting and public works that we have no, no control over. And, and we just ask that they report separately. Um, I think the work session will get all this worked out, and we're happy to, to move forward with that.
So if I have this, can you just walk me through, if I'm a business, I, we, we're, can you just walk me through the process of what this looks like? So I'm starting off in, if I'm saying I'm, I don't know, I'm doing work with any agency, can you just walk me through what the process looks like? I don't know if it should be DOT that you give me the example, but any agency will work for me.
Well, I think, I, I think if you want to start with, with Finance, I mean, Keisha can, can talk about how, how we procure goods and services, um, through a, a normal, uh, procurement contract, um, you know, through her office, if you'd like to start there. But, but some of the more complicated and some of the very big dollars involve construction and public works, which would be DOT, DGS, and public, and DPW. Um, but Keisha, if you want to just talk about the outreach that you have and how you get, get vendors in?
Uh, we have a multitude of different, um, uh, avenues that we solicit, uh, getting vendors in and getting them registered into, um, CityBuy, um, as a supplier. Um, and we also have the ability to tag, uh, several different categories, such as MBE, uh, WBE, uh, suppliers, small businesses, what have you. And we have the vision in moving forward that we would also be able to tag these particular, um, this business model as well. Um, we have different outreaches during the course of the, uh, year where we have reverse trades. Um, we obtain business cards. We reach out to these, uh, potential suppliers, assist them with registering in CityBuy, obtaining their, uh, information. Uh, we have a supplier management team that also participates, which is in... Maybe a year and a half old in the Bureau. Uh, we also have operation team that does a lot of the outreach as well. Uh, we also coordinate with the minority and, uh, women-owned businesses and their database and ensure that those folks are also, uh, registered in CityBuy.
And so what we're saying is it essentially won't be any hardship. I've read through the documents and the reports, so we literally can add the one line, check yes or no. Um, and it can be that simple.
We believe so, yes.
And the system will allow us to break it down to, um, for each individual, um, category that you mentioned? Or will there be someone manually that will have to go to each and every time? And will we be able to see this, um, publicly as well? Will this be on our website where you can see, uh, whether or not the documents and the businesses?
As far as the website is concerned, we haven't ventured out to have a, um, uh, a, uh, methodology for this particular bill, uh, model of procurement. But however, uh, there is a database that can be accessed right now through, um, uh, the, uh, Minority Women and, uh, Business Office. In addition to CityBuy, you can also navigate if you're a registered approved, uh, vendor.
And, and Madam Chairman, if I could, if I could add to, um, you know, that our understanding is this is going to be a self-reporting. In other words, it's incumbent upon the, the contractor to, to annotate that, that they are a employee-owned business, not the city's requirement to go out and investigate all these companies and see who's, who's, if they are e- employees or not. Um, so it's self-reporting, and, and we can certainly provide that functionality in CityBuy. And we've looked at Workday, and we think Workday can handle this as well, but we'll need some lead time. I think we worked with Councilman Henry on maybe giving us a few more months on this after it's enacted, um, to get it worked out.
Yeah, Madam Chair, one of the amendments that Finance had been, had proposed that I, I'm, I'm fine with was, uh, pushing the effective date back to January one of two thousand twenty-one. And, um, our collective hope is that that will give us, uh, time to integrate with, uh, Workday so that the report that comes out, uh, sometime before October one of two thousand twenty-one would be able to encompass all of the information that's been collected so far that calendar year. Or, I'm sorry, technically in the second half of that, um, the current fiscal year.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? If no one has any questions, um, we'll wait to get the other, uh, documents and everything, and we'll have the, our work session if no one has anything. Oh, Janelle, I'm sorry, oh, DOT?
Yes, sorry.
We're, you're on mute, so we can't hear you.
Sorry, I just wanted to give the report briefly for the Department of Public Works. Um, we, um, mainly defer to, um, law and to finance, but we wanted to highlight, um, Baltimore City's, um, small business development, um, program. Um, and we have this training program that's eleven weeks. Um, and it was developed to assist local, small, and minority or women-owned business enterprises to become more contract-ready to support Baltimore City on more than three billion dollars in utility construction work. So that's been a very successful program. And we're still able to, um, we're still planning, um, to have it even during COVID, um, this fall. Um, but it will be virtual, um, and applications would be due, um, let me make sure, September one, two thousand twenty. Um, so that really helps, um, small businesses learn the, the complications of, um, you know, applying for contracts and being ready to subcontract, um, for projects within the city, um, which can be a daunting process, I think, for a lot of, um, small businesses. So just wanted to highlight that we had that, and we're really proud of it. And, um, wanted, um, make sure that, um, people are aware of that. So, thank you very much. Marcia Collins apologizes for not being here. She's at the Planning Commission.
No, that's okay. Uh, any of the commit, committee members have any questions for, you know? Oh, uh, I saw you guys at the same time, so...
I, I just wanted to point out that there are participants on the attendee list from the public. I don't know if any of them wanted to provide testimony today.
Yes, after we finish, uh, with all the committee, I would want to go with them. But, uh, please, if you do, just raise your hand on the, um, function, raise hand function, please. And that way we, uh, can know whether or not you want to speak or not. Um, and I guess MPC doesn't have anything. Okay. Uh, Eric, go ahead. I see her.
Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, um, I, I would like to add one more piece... Madam Chair, I would like to add one more piece. I was, I was waiting to listen to see if anything was discussed further about capital project procurement. And I believe Keisha Brown did an excellent job of outlining one of the procurement processes that DGS uses. There's another procurement process that we use for capital construction projects. That process involves vetting through the boards and commissions. And the boards and commissions is responsible for the prequalification and subsequent annual requalification of contractors and consultants for the capital improvement and contracting process. We feel like that might be a good vetting forum and process for accounting for employee-owned businesses. And we did include that in our narrative.
Thank you, Eric. We don't have any other questions from the committee members. It doesn't look like we have anyone from the public wanting to speak out. If I've missed you, please let us know, please speak out, because other than that, we're going to go into recess until our work session. All right, it looks like we didn't miss anybody. MPC, enjoy your, enjoy the rest of the funeral. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.